Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim and myself make up the Licensing Board, so we've got a quorum tonight. Our first item of business is approval of the Licensing Board minutes from March 17th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. John, Aaron, any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is Country Inn and Suites Amusement Devices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thanks, Aaron and John. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And our last item is a recommendation to deny Dominic Van Buskirk operator's license. Chief, are you taking that one?
Yep. You know what? We never enter into these conversations lightly. We know to deny and or ask for a denial is a restriction on someone's employment. I think in this case, the facts are laid out before you in the memo provided by Lieutenant McAndrews. I think as our also as our process has evolved, instead of rehashing every single incident just out of the dignity of the applicant, I'd just like to touch on three big points. One is the intent of the permit. The intent of the permit is the operator would be in a position of responsibility regarding customers purchasing alcohol beverages, controlling employee, I'm sorry, controlling licensed premise and the conduct of the people within that establishment. So keep that in mind as we review that memo. That's the intent, is to make sure that it will be a position of responsibility. We have an expectation that they'll work closely with the police department and its employees to ensure the safety of all patrons and citizens. And finally, a reminder that a application is not specific to one location. If we grant the application, they may serve at any licensed premise. So sometimes, say with proper supervision, but the license would let them work at any operator. So I am asking for you to consider denial based on the seven violations in the last two to three years that are specific to alcohol or drug violations, and also the failure to work cooperatively with the police department, providing false information, providing false ID. I don't believe that speaks well to his ability to have a position of responsibility and work with our expectations.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, McAndrews. Any questions?
I would make a motion to deny the operator's license for Dominic Van Buskirk.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any more comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Those two items will appear on our Common Council agenda here in a matter of minutes in our consent agenda. We have no more business before the Licensing Board, so I will adjourn.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have four agenda items this evening. The first one is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on March 17th, Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer and Alderman Allen. We have a motion, a second. Any additions, deletions, corrections, omissions? There being none, all in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Second agenda is Resolution Number 88 appropriating funds from the Washington County Municipal Radio Grant Program. Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep. Thank you. This should be the third and final time we bring this grant in front of the elected body. On March 3rd, you accepted $43,000 from the Washington County Municipal Grant Program. On March 17th, the money was paid from Washington County to our depart to the city and placed in a general revenue fund. Tonight, I'm asking that we transfer those funds, $43,000, into the police department's outlay under $5,000 a month.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Burquist and Alderman Allen. Any questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief. Our next item is Resolution Number 87 authorizing the appropriation of funds for the purchase of a UTV firelight skid. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight, sorry, tonight, before you add for consideration a resolution to appropriate funds for the purchase of a UTV firelight skid, this is a skid unit for our UTV that allows us to fight wildland grass fires with it. In October, we accepted the DNR Forestry Fire Protection Grant. It's a 50% grant match grant for up to $8,000, so $4,000 of state funding to help purchase this grant. Today's resolution will allocate the money to the Fire Department Outlay Fund to pay for the skid unit that we recently received.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions for Chief? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Our last item this evening is Resolution Number 89, accepting donations to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a very impressive list of donations that we like to present to the Common Council and our community. The first two donations total $3,302. Both donations are for our special Olympics program. This includes a $50 donation by the Knights of Columbus Group 1964, and a second donation of $3,251.01 donated by Fox Brothers Piggly Wiggly, proceeds from the January Roundup for Charity Campaign. The third donation this evening is $200 donated by Vortex Pickleball LLC for use of pickleball courts for a tournament. These funds would be used for future pickleball amenities. The fourth donation this evening is a total of $11,250. These donations are specific for sponsorship to the 2025 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. These donations include $1,250 donated by Killian Management Services, $1,250 donated by Richline Construction LLC, $1,250 donated by Delta Defense LLC, $2,500 donated by Westbin Insurance Company Charitable Fund at the Westbin Community Foundation, and a very impressive $5,000 donation by Bank 59. Bank 59 is one of two presenting sponsors for this event. The next donation this evening is $25,000 donated by Westbury Bank for naming rights and a seven-year sponsorship of the Westbury Bank Aqua Park in Regner Park. The next donation of $4,800 donated by the Westbin Sunrise Rotary Foundation, Incorporated for Aqua Park tickets to be given out free to the Westbin Library customers. So we will offer free Aqua Park tickets at the library. You can go there, grab those tickets, take them down to Regner Park and swim for free, and the Sunrise Rotary will reimburse us for those tickets. Again, for us, it's another very cool marketing niche that we wouldn't have without our sponsors from the Sunrise Rotary. The next donation this evening, $1,000, is donated by Whitetails Unlimited for the Municipal Archery Range on Municipal Drive. We are very fortunate. Whitetails Unlimited annually donates money to that archery range for targets, stand, target stands, things like that, just for maintenance items. We are very fortunate of that organization. The next very impressive donation this evening for $40,000 donated by an anonymous donor for the Ridge Run Cabin renovations. This is the third donation from this anonymous donor totaling $105,000. The next donation is $200 donated by the Westbin Disc Golf Club for future improvements to the Riverside Park Disc Golf Course. We are very thankful for these heartfelt community partners, their heartfelt donations this evening. Their support makes these quality of life projects and programs a reality. If you look at some of these programs between Aqua Park and Renovating Ridge Run Cabin and our sponsorships, some of those projects and programs probably would not happen without the community support. So, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Any comments or questions? I'll just add one comment, Mike, echoing your sentiment, that without these organizations, these businesses, and these very generous individuals, we wouldn't have the quality of life that we have here in West Bend. So my and our extreme gratitude for the continued generosity of supporting these types of projects in our city. With that, I'll call that to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. With no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening. It is Monday, April 7th, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin State statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our Common Council here tonight with everyone present, and we're going to start off with some presentations tonight. And Chief Dearing is going to take us through a presentation on National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Great. If I could have our dispatchers come forward, please. Recognized by our community? If you're comfortable. Thank you for taking the time. Next week is National Telecommuter Telecommuters Week. As many have said, we're taking our time tonight to really recognize what is a significant and vital part of our team. To say that these team members answer the phones is a grave misunderstanding of what their job particularly entails. They are integral to our public safety and more importantly, our quality of life in West Bend. They are the first contact for our citizens when they have a cry for help. They talk to people when they're scared, when they're embarrassed, when they're angry, and they're calm, professional, subject matter experts on our community and our safety. They are lifesavers, truly lifesavers. When people call, are scared, their loved ones in need of emergency medical services, they link us with our partners at the Fire Department and get them around, and then they talk through how to save that family member's life. It's routine for them. This is who they are. They serve our community. They are quality of life specialists for our community. They answer every question from when the parade starts, when's the fireworks, are we going to have fireworks, when's my garbage going to be picked up, who's that guy running for Alderman, who's that woman running for Alderman? They answer every question under the sun. I'm probably forgetting all the funny ones, right? They are our quality of life, subject matter experts. Truly, this group, not all of them could join us. Some of them are working on the road right now. We'll recognize all of them in a second here, but truly, they make the difference between good police service in West Bend and great police service in West Bend. It's not a small thing. They are integral into our ability to value our pledge to provide excellence in policing, not mediocrity in policing, excellence in policing. They are that first step for us to do that. So I'd like to take just a moment to recognize our team members. I should say, they're not just not just dispatchers either. They fill a tremendous amount of roles. We have drone operators. We have CPR instructors training our team today to save lives. We have blood drive organizers. We have cadet advisors. I, I'm going to stop there because there's more, and I'm going to acknowledge that I'll forget more. We have all the jobs that they do that you would not think of that is more than just answering a phone. So I thank them very much, and again, they're a critical part of our mission to protect and serve and provide excellence in policing. So when I say your name, go ahead, step forward to us, if someone couldn't join us today, but our dispatchers are Beth McCarthy, Kim Wendelborn, DeeDee Hall, Anne Marie Hale, who's on the mic right now, Heather Corning, Kaylee Riggy, Amy McCartney, Ashley Seifert, Imogen Miller, Dan Sidwell, and Ja'Kyla Jordan. And we are privileged to have them be part of our team. Thank you.
While they finish shaking hands, I'd like to issue a proclamation. This is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas by monitoring police and fire activities by radio and providing them with vital information, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters, ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the point of contact for all city departments after normal business hours, and ensure citizens have access to vital municipal services 24 hours a day. And whereas the work of these unseen first responders is invaluable and should be applauded and held in the highest regard all throughout the year, for without their commitment, devotion, and hard work, countless number of lives and property would be in jeopardy. Now therefore, I, Joel Onger, the Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through the 19th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I encourage all West Bend citizens to recognize and honor the men and women whose service and dedication keep our community and citizens safe. Thank you again. Thank you for all being here tonight. All right. I have another special resolution. Resolution Number 84 honoring Alderman Mark Allen. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I heard Sparts and Mary Beth Sizer. Whereas Mark Allen was elected as District Two Alderman in April 2019 to April 2025, faithfully representing his constituents in the City of West Bend for six years. And whereas during his tenure as Alderman, he served on the Board of Public Works, Finance Committee, Tourism Commission, Long Range Transportation Planning, Airport Commission, and Downtown Business Improvement District. And whereas Mark Allen exemplified outstanding leadership as District Two Alderman, devoting a substantial portion of his time improving our historic downtown for the betterment and enrichment of West Bend citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Mark Allen and expresses deep appreciation for his dedicated service to the City of West Bend. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your service, Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd love to make some comments. First, thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve. I, I just want to get a quick comment for the, if you're in the City of West Bend and you happen to see a Fire Department vehicle or a Police Department vehicle, know that there's a dispatcher in that vehicle as well. We have a lot of single, single operator vehicles out there. So without the dispatchers, they're, they're not fully manned. So, first, I'd like to thank not only the members of the council, the city staff who have made my service pleasurable. I'd like to thank two organizations that also have helped to facilitate my effective service to my constituents. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities for their excellent training and support of citizen administrate or citizen legislators and so on. And the second would be the League of or the Midmarine Municipal Association. You know, they say it takes a village. It really does. In this case, it takes a village and some cities and, and some great staff. And without them, I wouldn't have been anywhere near as successful. So, thank you very much.
John Fellows is going to walk us through our downtown master plan quarterly report. Make sure you push the mic button there, John.
I'll just get really low. As you know, last fall, we started doing a quarterly report on some of the progress for downtown, just to kind of make sure that the downtown master plan and the implementation items kind of stay fresh. So, just a couple of things I wanted to point out for the downtown planters. We did go out to bid for a maintenance contract, and that was awarded. It was pretty competitive. We had six submissions with quite a range of, of cost. We did go with a low bid. Thanks for the Parks Department for putting that bid package together and going through the, the submission process for all of that. So that was awarded to Landscapes, so it is a three-year contract. So they'll be helping us for the next three years. They'll be doing maintenance of the pots, the perennials, the trees, the weeds that might grow between cracks in the sidewalks, the hanging baskets, watering, all those types of things. So you'll see their staff out and about pretty soon. Actually, you probably saw a few of them last week. Hanging baskets are supposed to be installed around the week of May 18th. Same thing with the annual plantings. Mums will come probably in September, and then the winter greens will come in November. So just a quick update with that. And then also, the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation awarded a Main Street Award for our connected communities. So we were able to go and receive that award last month, along with a lot of other awards that were given to a lot of communities in downtown. So if you haven't had a chance to check out the website for that award, please do that. And then lots of programming has been going on in the last three months downtown, from the ice sculptures to the chocolate. And so we have great partners with the Downtown Association and the Bend that keeps all the active things going on in downtown. And we're about 75% of the way with our new design guidelines, so you should see those coming pretty soon.
Thank you, John. Any questions? Very good. Thank you. All right. Our next item is approval of our regular meeting Common Council minutes from March 17th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. Alderman Sternig, any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have a public hearing tonight, and so I will open up the public hearing right now, and this is a public hearing and potential action further down the agenda on a street vacation, Street Vacation 25-001. And this is to vacate the street, the westerly portion, 750 feet of Wingate Street, east of Stockhausen Lane. So if there's anybody who wishes to address the council during this public hearing, now is your time. Jim, did you want to say a few words before the hearing?
Sure. Just real quick. So this is part of the process for the street vacation. This is the last step that we have before we actually, the council votes on it to actually enact on this. So this is for any time for anyone to object or express any concern to the street vacation. We have mailed out notices and we've hand-delivered notices. We have not received any inquiries or comments or anything in regards to the street vacation for this. So we'll, later in the next action, will be a resolution enacting the final vacation of that portion of roadway.
Great. Thanks, Jim. If there's anybody wishing to address the council on this item, now is your time. The public hearing is now open. Please just come to the podium and tell us your name, and you will be heard.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. I didn't see anybody get up. I assume that there's nobody here to address. Okay. There's been a motion to close the public hearing. In a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. We're going to move on to consent agenda items now, and I'm going to pull out item number eight, which was the recommendation to deny Dominic Van Buskirk operator's license. So I'd like to take that item up first. So I will entertain the motion on the denial.
Motion to deny.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. And was that a second? Alderman Schmidt, any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then we'll entertain the next items on the consent agenda, Country Inn and Suites Amusement Devices, Resolution Appropriating Funds for the Washington County Municipal Radio Grant Program, Resolution Number 87 authorizing the appropriation of funds for the purpose of a UTV firelight skid, and a resolution accepting the donations from the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim. Second by Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. We'll move on to other items for consideration tonight. The first one I have is a mayoral appointment of Mike Yench to serve on the Tourism Commission as a city staff member. That commission is made up of someone who is appointed by the council from city staff. It was a position that Jay Chambault sat on, and my recommendation is to fill that city staff seat on the Tourism Commission with Mike Yench.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We now have the action on the street vacation. Again, this is Resolution Number 85, Street Vacation 25-001, and this is to vacate the westerly, approximately 750 feet of Wingate Street, east of Stockhausen Lane in Tiff Number Three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is Resolution Number 86, which is a resolution approving a one-lot certified survey map and accepting right-of-way dedication for Wing Wingate Street cul-de-sac bulb. Jim?
Thank you. We're asking the council tonight to consider the resolution that we have before for you, to accept the and approve the right-of-way for Wingate Street. We Energy is, as part of their redevelopment for that area, is creating the cul-de-sac bulb to terminate that portion of Wingate that we did not disvacate as a permanent turnaround for that end of the, of the street. So we're asking for consideration to approve that, and then also the CSM for, with the dedications.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jim. Our next is possible action on DHCH Properties Tax Assessment Case. Jeff's going to take us through that one.
Good evening. So the council met last session in closed session and discussed the settlement agreement for DHCH, and Jay asked me to come tonight in case you have some questions regarding that.
Ian, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I was going to say you're just making a motion to authorize the city to enter into the settlement agreement that had been negotiated by our legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Any further questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Our next is a Village of Kewaskam Emergency Medical Service Agreement. Chief Noron.
Good evening again. What you have before you is actually four separate service agreements for the Kewaskam ambulance prior, previous Kewaskam ambulance service area. As you may recall, that we came in with the Town of Kewaskam and the Town of Wayne early on. They were early signers of the agreement and had already signed an agreement. As we went through the process with the other two remaining municipalities or government organizations, there was some movement on the innovation grant funding process through Act 12, and we wanted to make sure that we were signing an agreement that did not eliminate us from that grant process. So we did have some additional conversation with the Village of Kewaskam and come to an agreement on a slight change in the contract terms. The contract allows for a six-year agreement to make sure we're eligible for the innovation grant terms. However, it does allow the, all the grant terms. However, it does allow the, all the contracting parties the option to withdraw from the agreement after four years, which was more consistent with, with the original terms of the agreement we talked about. So, with that slight change to the Kewaskom, the Village of Kewaskom agreement, it was important to us that we make sure all four agreements are the same. So, we went back and offered the same changes to the Village, I'm sorry, the Town of Kewaskom and the Town of Wayne. So, what you have before you is the updated language for all four government organizations to enter into the EMS contract. Again, it's a six-year agreement with the option for them to look at other options after year four, only in the chance that we do not secure innovation grant funding for the agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. Any questions for Chief Noran? Alderman Allen?
The four agreements, I noticed some of them are signed, some are not, by the, the other parties. They've all agreed at this point, is that correct?
Yes, all four government organizations have agreed. It's just they're on different council agenda schedules. So, the Village of Kewaskom, I would classify as the primary contracting agency, has already signed. The other three will sign in the near future.
Just a comment. Chief, thank you very much for taking the time to get these four contracts aligned from a paperwork standpoint and from a process and tracking standpoint. Moving forward, it will help this body tremendously should anything else arise. So, thank you for taking the time and making the effort to do that.
I appreciate that.
Any more questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor, correct? Clerk? Yes, we do. How quickly I forget. All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you again.
Our next item, Mr. Phillips asked that we put this item on the agenda tonight. It's a water bill discussion. And so, Mike, I'll invite you to come to the mic tonight and tell us, tell us why you're here.
Okay. Hello, everybody. So, I had a water leak. And I found out about that water leak because the West Bend Water Department came by and said, "You've got a leak." And I said, "Well, you know, I don't, I don't think I do." Well, they walked around, they found the leak. So, I had a leak that was leaking into my backyard for, I mean, nobody knows how long. And so, the, you know, certainly the water was used, but, but none of it went into the sewer system because it went into the backyard. And that's what they told me. That's what they verified. So, when I got my water bill... Excuse me? You know, it is, my water bill is usually around $230, $240, something like that. So, the water bill is $4,817.98. So, I do believe, I'm not crazy about it, but I do need to pay the water part. I mean, because it was, it was leaked. And, you know, West Bend paid to get it there. And so, I, I understand that. So, that's 1745. What I would like is a reduction in the sewer tax portion of that. I certainly owe something because I have, I did have some normal usage. So, there is some normal sewage, you know, but nowhere near what was used. So, so the sewer tax here is $3,018, and my sewer tax is normally in the $200 range. So, because the service, you know, the sewer tax really, the service wasn't really delivered. I mean, it wasn't, it didn't go in the sewer. I'm, I'm asking that a reduction in the bill be made just in the sewer tax portion that corresponds to, and we don't know exactly, you know, but we can look at my history. I've, I've lived there for four and a half years by myself. I've been in the house for 30 years, but four and a half years. So, you know, the past four and a half years, I mean, it's never been above 200 bucks for the sewer portion. So, I would, you know, like a reduction in the sewer part of the bill, sewer tax part of the bill.
All right. Any, any questions for Mr. Phillips?
When, when did the city notify you? How long did it take the city to notify you of the discrepancy?
I don't know. I mean, I mean, so, so they came by, let's see, this is, I would say probably sometime in February. It was a little warmer. You know, it was one of our warm spells. We don't get too many of. And so, they, two, two men from the water department, you know, just knocked on my door in the morning. And I, I don't think, you know, none of us know how long this was leaking into the backyard. So, we just don't, I, I don't know.
It's unfortunate that they couldn't have caught it earlier.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how, how, because I, I've had water bills, you know, but, but, and they were normal. So, so I just, I just don't know.
Any other questions? Alderman Sternig?
Were there any leaks that you know, that you were able to identify inside the property and/or in the months that have followed, or the next statement since that time?
Thank you very much. After that time, did you notice any additional leaks inside your home? And/or in subsequent billing, have you noticed an increase that could be potentially due to some sort of leak inside the home? And I only ask that question because I had a similar situation. And I guess I was fortunate because it happened within like days of a billing cycle, that they actually noticed it based on my water consumption in the last four or five days. And they said, "Hey, you've got a leak." And sure enough, it was one of the steels on the bowl of my toilet that was just constantly draining water, didn't even notice it.
Right.
Anything in, on the interior of the home that you had noticed?
No, because, you know, the gentleman that came by brought that up. They said, you know, you know, is it a, is it a toilet, you know, something just running, you know, if the float's not working right, you know, all that happens. And so, I checked all that. If everything, I'm not aware of any other leak before or after. And I, I have not gotten... So, this bill was issued on March 3rd, March 4th.
Okay.
So, I haven't gotten another bill since then. But I, I'm not aware of any, I've checked it all. And not aware of any leak prior to or after.
Thank you.
Additional leak.
What kind of a discount are you proposing?
Well, you know, I mean, I don't know exactly. I mean, if, somewhere between, you know, $2,500, $2,600, something like that. You know, the, the sewer tax is $3,018. It's usually around 200. But I don't have exact numbers. So, I'm happy to err on the side of, of a lower discount, you know what I mean? You know, so, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for. $2,600 would be, I, I think that would be a $400 tax. That's still double of what I'd normally have. So, it should cover any, any error or any unusual usage that I'm not aware of. But, so that's what I, I was hoping to receive.
Alderman Schmidt, did you have a question? Oh, okay. John?
Yeah. That seems like that was more than just a leak. Was the faucet running constantly?
Well, it must have been dribbling. And I don't know for how long.
Even from a dribble or a leak, I can't imagine your sewer utility be like $2,500, $1,700 or $2,500, even if it started leaking from the point of your quarter, when it started to, I would imagine this was a January, December, January, and February billing.
I don't know. I don't know if it was leaking from, you know, the fall. I just have no idea.
I would like to ask the sewer utility manager if he could kind of explain to us what the difference is from the water leaking versus running, and the cost, the difference.
Sure. Good evening. So, yeah, sewer utilities policy is, we don't give credits on unknown leaks. There's a lot of unknown factors in this. We don't know how long it's been running, how many gallons went out. Past practice, we've had these inquiries in the past also, and we have not given any credits in any of the cases.
Okay. I'm sure, maybe this is a tough question and answer, but what I'm looking for, if this was a faucet that has been running, the amount of sewer invoice seems awful high if it's just a, a small trickle or a small amount of water running for that amount of time. So, in, in other words, this had to be running steady for almost three months.
It, it could have been. We, yeah, we don't know for sure what...
Yeah.
I mean, a leak adds up quite quickly, but, yeah, we just don't know the amount that was actually...
Okay. All right. That's what I'm getting at.
It is a hard question to answer without knowing.
Did you notice any ice or anything where that bib came out, where the water was running?
Because it was, so, so there was a hose, you know, and it was kind of under the snow. So, I did not notice anything. It's a kind of a back corner of my yard I don't go to.
Okay. All right.
Now, after they were there, and I went back, yeah, there was, there was ice. There was actually quite a bit of it.
Yeah.
But I didn't...
I'm surprised that hose didn't freeze up during the winter.
True. But, you know, you, you know, the temperature's up and down. I, I, you know...
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yep.
I had a case also where, where I had a faucet, actually, in this case, it was a water heater that decided to die. And, and I was able to pin it down. It was like three days before the, the meter reading cycle. And the day after the meter reading cycle, I was contacted by the water department, and that was what triggered me to go down and realize I had a leak. As, as I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, the water department can issue a credit for the water portion of the bill, but because the sewer utility is based on water usage, our policy has been not to issue a credit for that sewer usage.
So, the, the water utility is a regulated utility by, from PSC, so they cannot generally, unless there's a, like, there, I, I, I don't think there is, yeah, Ruth can handle that. But the water utility is a regulated utility. Sewer utility is not.
Right. The PSC regulates the water utility, and they tell us exactly what we can do, and that's what we have to follow. We can issue a credit for 27 cents per unit of water over their average. And that's all we can do. We can do no more. We can do no less. The sewer utility is not regulated by the PSC. And the sewer utilities policy is they do not issue credits for water leaks. And to address your question earlier about when we read the meter and when we notified the residents, the meter was read on February 6th. It was downloaded into our billing system on February 12th, and we notified the resident on February 13th. So, we only read the meters quarterly. There would have been no way for us to know in between that time period that there was a leak. We don't read the meters. We read them quarterly because that's how we bill. So...
And that's, that matches what I remember.
Yep.
Yeah.
But that's why there's a difference. The water utility is regulated by the PSC. The sewer utility is not.
And whose policy, is that a city policy that we can't make adjustments?
It is the West Bend Sewer Utilities Policy, and it has been in effect for over 30 years.
Okay. So, isn't it possible for us to reconsider that or change that or after 30 years?
That is your policy. If the council would decide to change this action, the sewer utilities policy, only because we are not going to look at every individual situation and now attempt to determine who is entitled to a credit and who is not. And if you give someone a credit now because they say it is all an outside leak, and I'm not saying it wasn't, I'm not saying it was, but if we give this individual a credit because it was an outside leak, the next individual that may have a leak in their home, because you have no idea, this is water running that is running 24 hours a day in your home and a toilet that you may not know, it adds up to quite a lot. The next individual may say, "Well, my leak was outside, so I, I want a credit for that water." You're opening it up a huge can of worms, and you're opening it up to perception. So, the sewer utilities policy will remain that we do not issue credits for unknown leaks. And a lot of times, the unknown leaks, the water will still go down the drain in the home, so it's still being treated at the sewer plant. So, the costs are still there. And we have no way of knowing where any of this water goes, even though it could appear to be outside of the faucet. There could be a leak in the home and a toilet that does fix itself because that does happen. So, you may go in there and not find a leak, but that's because it's adjusted itself. And now there is no more leak in the home. We have no way of knowing where that water went. We couldn't tell you. We're not in the home, and we don't know. So, the policy is that we do not issue credits for unknown leaks.
But, but this is a leak that the water utility identified. It's not my claim.
We came out and found the faucet running. We don't know how long the faucet was running, and we don't know what else could have been happening. We don't.
Right. I understand. But my point is, is that...
They came and found the faucet was on, yes.
They told me about it.
Yep. We found it when we came out.
I'm not the one, you know, making the claim. They did.
But we did find the faucet on, yes. But again, we don't know that all the water went there. There's no way of knowing that.
Any more questions? John?
I just, yeah, I just have a comment. I tend to agree with Ruth. If we start, I, I really feel sorry for you because that is a huge chunk of change to pay for something or all probabilities that water was outside, but it's not known. But if this happens to, and I am aware of another customer that had a huge water bill also, they had a leak, they possibly could come through and say, "By the way, we had a water leak, and we want a refund." And it's going to come back to us to make a decision whether we give them... It, it puts the sewer utility really in a tough situation. Yes, you're going to give one individual. No, you're not going to give another because we really, again, we really don't know where that water went. All probability, it was outside. But again, we're only speculating. And I think if we do give a refund, I, I personally think we're going to start to really open a can of worms, and we're going to have more of these issues pop up down the road. Yes, it's, it's, it's a hardship, but sometimes I think, you know, if we start doing, for one, we're going to definitely have to do it for everyone else. That's my personal opinion. That's how I feel.
Matt?
Well, and in my opinion, I think we should take it in good faith that it was an accident. The resident is willing to compromise, pay the full water bill, pay part of the sewer bill, and for the sake of the resident, and I, I believe too, it was an accident. And I think, just to be fair, we should provide some sort of a discount.
John?
My, my perception also is if I would have a pool in the summer and fill it, out of my faucet, you, you pay both fees anyways. Even though I know the water went to the pool, I still have to pay that sewer fee. So, how do you separate that out? I, I, I kind of go with John here going, you do, if you forgive this, we can open up a whole can of worms. So, that's kind of the way I'm going to...
Matt, you were going to say something?
Two comments. One, John, you can have them do a meter read prior to and then after filling a pool, so you're not paying for the, the sewer portion of that.
Yeah, I used to do that.
But it's, but it is one of those things where you do it proactively before and after to account for that. While I agree both John and John, in regard to opening Pandora's Box on this, I also believe that this one has some circumstances that would lead me to move to some sort of a, a reduction. One of them being, it was noted that it was an exterior leak, as it was identified by Public Water, Public Works. Unbeknownst to the homeowner, before it happened, and he found out about the fact that there was a leak. It'd be different if he knew that there was a leak, and he had a high bill, and then said, hey, you need to come out and look at this, and all of a sudden, there's an outside water spigot on. The fact that there was plenty of water and ice in the area where this hose was leads me to believe that it was running for some portion of time. So I think this case is unique in that regard. That said, I also do recognize that it, it does open the opportunity for others to contest this. But I think if, if we look at the merits of what has been presented to us by the homeowner and, and what has been stated by the utilities as relates to their policy, I think there are opportunities for us to do the right thing, because it's the right thing to do, not just to follow a hard and fast policy, which I believe we still need to hold in place. I'm not suggesting we change policy on this, but rather make an exception, give them the circumstances of this, this case.
I would agree on that. Alderman Allen?
Question for city attorney. If we were to make a decision in favor of Mr. Phillips in this case, could somebody else like me, who had exactly the same situation, come, come in and say, well, I should get this relief as well?
So I think there, I mean, there is some ability, and there is legitimate concern about setting a precedent. You know, the policy exists for a reason. I mean, whenever you're making exceptions, you're looking for what distinguishes it from the policy, you know? And so I, I, that's the, the distinguishing characteristic here seems to be what, you know, Alderman Sternig pointed out, which is it was a leak discovered by a water utility worker. It was an outdoor leak. You know, does that mean that, you know, the, the question really is, is that establishing a precedent that is suddenly going to turn into a common occurrence, or is this a unique enough situation where it warrants an exception? That, that's, that's the way I would, that's the way you should legally look at it, because otherwise, the policy exists for a specific reason. That being said, there's always circumstances that, you know, policies can't specifically address. If you look at it in a black and white, there's, there's times when black and white doesn't always apply, or when, when the circumstance doesn't fit in the, in the box that is established.
And then for the water utility or the sewer utility, would, would a single hose bib leaking account for the volume of water that was delivered? We're dealing with a half inch or maybe a half inch hose bib?
Yeah, five eights or so. As Ruth stated before, a leaky toilet can add up very quickly. It, it could have been. It's just, it's hard to determine how much. If it's coming out of the faucet, how, how hard it's on. Yeah, it, it would be hard to determine.
Alderman Bush.
Yeah, this, this situation kind of brings me back to once in a while we'll have cards or claim to the city about some issues, and it goes to the insurance company. Insurance company says denies it because of whatever, and we still have to vote on it to say yes or no, to approve it or deny it. And it sounds like this is kind of where we're in the same ballpark, right, Ian?
It's a little, sorry, it's a little bit different in that case, because in that case, it's a, it's a more of a liability issue, and is there, is the city liable under the immunity statutes?
Okay.
This, this isn't, this is more, you know, is somebody liable for a service that's been provided? Right? Less of a, something the city did and more of a, is this something that should warrant an exception? I, I mean, I would, I would say it'd be similar to, you know, somebody coming to the common council and saying, hey, we are holding this community event. Can you waive the park rental fee for it? Or some, you know, where's there's a policy that says we charge people a certain amount for this activity?
Okay.
And somebody is asking you for an exception, and you're looking at, you know, do you grant that? I mean, that's obviously a little bit different circumstance, but that's, it would be more akin to something like that than making a determination of are we liable, you know, under a lawsuit for, for something that happened?
Thank you.
Alderman Spurts?
Was there a cause for this? Or, I mean, was it a spigot left on, or was it a hose that burst? Faucet was on, that it froze, or?
So wait, I dug around a little bit. My, my, my yard has the only swing set, play area in the neighborhood. So I have a lot of neighborhood kids in my yard all the time, and it's, it's, that's fine. And so by asking around the different families, I did find that there's a, a young girl. She's a, um, she's developmentally disabled. She's, I think she's about six or seven, and she was evidently filling up a bucket of water and playing with it sometime late fall, the best that they can piece it together. So that's as much as I was able to find out. It's a hose I don't use. I mean, I, I haven't used it in years. And it's just, you know, part of the yard, I don't need a hose, you know? So that's as much as I was able to find out.
All right, Ian, we have this on tonight as a, because Mr. Phillips requested it. Is this something that we need to take a vote on tonight, or how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can make a motion and take a vote. You could send it over for further consideration next meeting. It's up to you guys.
Okay.
I had said it a little bit earlier. I was talking to Mayor Anger. I was out of town for a baseball tournament. I saw that the, the item was on the agenda. I didn't necessarily really even dig into fully, I guess, kind of what this was until this morning. This is, I mean, I, this isn't the first time hearing of it, but you know, to get both sides of the story, personally, I would be okay with moving this to a future meeting, just to be able to think about it. I don't know if, you know, doing some more digging into it, whatever the case may be. I don't know if I'm ready to make a snap decision on it right now, one way or the other. That's just my thoughts.
I agree with you, Aaron. I think I, I'm right now sitting here hearing conversations, I'm popping from back and forth. So I would make a motion just to table this and give us a next meeting to come up with a decision at that time.
Second.
Point of order. As I understand tabling, you don't, you have to have a motion.
It's postponing, it's postponing consideration to the next meeting.
So I would then make a motion to postpone decision to the next meeting.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion by Alderman Zingchime and a second by Alderman Berquist to postpone this item to our next meeting, which is in two weeks. Okay, so, Aaron?
Yep.
Okay. The only thing I would ask the council over the next two weeks is if you have any questions, and Mr. Phillips, if it's okay if they, I don't know, call you or?
Definitely.
There's, there's, you, you did read off some dollar amounts with your bill.
Right, right.
Your water bill is not public information, and so if that's something that you'd be willing to share with the council, if they're interested, if they contact you. And then the same goes for our sewer and water utility. If you have questions about the, the policy that's been in place or, you know, other situations in the past that have been handled, please reach out to Steve, to Ruth, and, and get your questions answered. I'm sure that both the utility and Mike would like to put this to bed, and so we need to be prepared to do that in two weeks. So please get your questions answered, and we'll postpone. All in favor of postponing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You need my contact info or auto eight?
You don't need to say it publicly on the
Okay.
YouTube channel that's airing this tonight, but maybe we've got one more item to cover, and then we're going to break. So maybe if you want to hang around and do that, or if you want to email it to me, I can email it.
I'll email it to you.
Why don't we do that? Email it to me, and I'll email it to the council members.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, we've got an item that is listed at the bottom of your agenda. It says reconvene into open session. That item, we, we can take up right now, and so I'm going to move that item next. And this is a developers agreement amendment for Eisenbaum Village. John?
Hello, good evening again. So this particular item came before you back in 2023. There was a development agreement. In that development agreement, there were specific dates, a number of units, et cetera, that needed to be completed. The developer has asked it to move all those dates essentially by one year. So you'll see in the document that was attached, all those dates basically moving forward with regard to the number of units, et cetera, one year forward. They just, they have some foundations and other things in. Some of the first units that they had constructed were facing the senior housing. So it was sort of a construction site. The driveways were mud. The sales are starting to pick up now, but the first couple of months when they were complete, they were a little bit slower, mostly probably because of people viewing the situation as a construction site, which was not anticipated at that time. I think Ian may have a few things to add to.
Yep. So a couple of things to note about this. So first, the way this development agreement is structured, the city, the city obligations under the development agreement get paid before any increment gets paid out to the developer. So this is one of the, I guess you could call it new style ones where we, you know, anything we paid for gets paid for first, and then whatever's left over, the developer gets, you know, 98% of that. So, so this, the, the change in the schedule does not affect the city portion. And we had, we had our consultants at Aylers run the updated cash flows to verify, A, verify that our, our portion is going to get paid even with the revamped schedule, and then also to verify that the, this will still get paid off, and we would still be able to close the TID at least a year early based on this. So obviously, the ultimate projections about when does everything close, and when is, when is the, you know, this, this grant paid off in full depends on the final valuation. And, you know, it's entirely possible that, just like with the HKS one, the valuation blows through the minimum property or the minimum guarantee, and it gets paid off even faster. But with the structure, our bills get paid. It should still close early, and even if it does stretch and there is insufficient funds, it's the developer that just loses out on some of the, some of their pay-go grant. At the end of the day, if the valuations, you know, lag a little bit because of that. So this isn't like, I would say, like the, you know, the industrial ones where it's, oh, we're, we're giving them a specific percentage every single year, and we're paying our portion out of that remaining percentage. We get paid first, so.
Just like a question and clarification, only because, John, you had mentioned that it was pushing things out one year. If I go back to the original agreement, unless I was referring to a, a different iteration, it's actually pushing out four years, correct?
I think it does push out three or four years, yes.
Okay, I just, I want to be, pardon me, clear on that. And, and when Aylers ran the numbers, it was based on that?
It was based on the projections that were in there, correct?
That's, I just wanted to be clear that what they ran projections on and what you've just indicated in terms of still being able to pay this off prior to its original retirement date is still something that, that is being rightfully considered, which I'm in favor of.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion, or?
Are, are we still going to need the closed session for the other?
Yes, yes. So this, this was separate from the closed session. This wasn't, we didn't feel that, that we needed the closed session to summarize this.
I'll entertain a motion. Did I hear a motion over here?
Motion to approve the amended TID terms.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingchime. Any more comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our reports tonight. Our library board met on March 18th, 2025. Alderman Berquist?
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was held on March 18th. The meeting began with the call to order. All members were present, with Dr. Wright and Tim Harder attending electronically. Next was the pledge of allegiance and approval of the consent agenda. Joseph Lee Gate, and you'll notice a little first person talking tonight. Joseph Lee Gate, our financial secretary, provided the monthly financial reports and fund balances. Library director Steve Theory gave his director's report focusing on outstanding projects around the library. Items like the ongoing blind replacement project, updates to the story room audiovisual equipment, slate floor replacement, and additional security upgrades were discussed. We also had a discussion on library usage and future space needs. Steve finished with an update on the current federal funding situation. We can rest assure that most of our funding comes from city and county means rather than the federal government, but that's mostly centered on grant funding, federal funding. Library board president Deb Bartnikowski had a question concerning all of us getting emails, and Steve said he'd work on it. That has been addressed and corrected. A new agenda item is the Monarch Report. Board member Barbara Olson gave us an update on what's happening at Monarch Library Systems, as she's also on the board there. They too are looking at strategic planning and looking to the future. Our only agenda item for discussion was a review of the patron rules of conduct policy. The policy was adjusted, removing an age restriction concerning children, and the vision was approved. The next meeting will be April 15th, tax day.
All right, thank you. Our Parks and Rec Commission met on March 27th.
Yes, they did. Ryan provided an update for the policies for Regner Aqua Park. Generally, there were small changes and clarification based on suggestions from our last meeting. The updated policies were reviewed and approved. Jacob Lindsay proposed an Eagle Scout project intended to improve the Ridge Run Sleding Hill. His basic design plan is to install posts every 10 to 20 feet up the steepest part of the hill. They will be connected by two ropes of different sizes and at different heights to accommodate all ages of children and adults as they climb back up the hill after sledding. He gave an excellent presentation, and his proposal was approved. Bear with me, there were a lot, there was a review and a presentation of the 2025 potential projects and additional information. So bear with me, there are a lot. The White Family Cabin Improvement at Ridge Run, painting at the Lachlan Moran Center and Barn, 209 trees, which include street trees, Emerald Ash Bore Replacement, and post-street construction, two accessible parking stalls adjacent to the labyrinth garden, roof replacement at the Park and Rec, uh, Park and Forestry Workshop. That's so they don't see the sky through the roof anymore. Camp Lodge interior improvement at Regner, new playground at Wingate Park, continued work at the Nature Playground at Lachlan, 50 trees at Lachlan as part of Arbor Day, a scoreboard for Field 13 at Quas Creek, security cameras at the Downtown Riverwalk and Riverside Pavilion, dredging and the Aqua Park at the Regner Swim Pond, development of a plan for the skate park, floor replacement at the Regner Rotary and Kiwanis Buildings, lighting for pedestrian bridges, potentially a new gazebo, potential public restrooms downtown, improvements along the Ice Age Trail, parking lots, boardwalks, and so forth, improvements at Rolfs Park, expansion, fencing, parking area, and key code admission, and a review of Park Site O for future use, particularly since the city is growing in that general direction. And an all abilities playground. Apparently, we do have a spot at Ridge Run and some materials, but that still needs work. There were also updates for Lachlan. They're busy with spring classes and school field trips. On April 26th, volunteers will plant trees for Arbor Day. The annual plant sale is coming up, that's May 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And on July 9th, Dan Sh And on July 9th, Dan Shimon will present a program on Door County and the Birds of Wisconsin. So as you can see, and there were a lot of donations, as Mike already shared with us, thank you, Mike, as you can see, there are a lot of irons in the fire. While some are covered by budget, many, many depend on donations and grants. So I'm just gonna share again that luckily, we are blessed with very generous community members and organizations, and a huge thank you to all of those. We would not be the beautiful community we are without the support of all our residents who use their time, talent, and treasures to make West Bend a beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Beth. All right, our Plan Commission met on April 2nd. John, are you doing that one?
I am.
All right.
All right, we also had a busy, active agenda that night. We started off our night with a public hearing for a conditional use permit to a log reading at 261 South Main Street, along the river and the parking lot, which was, the use permit was passed after the public hearing. We had request approval of two, of a two-lot certified survey map at Stockhalls and Lane and Wingate Street, as what we just voted on tonight, and that was approved. We also approved the combination of a certified survey map to combine three lots into one lot on the Northwest Corner of Trenton Road and Wingate Street, and that all has to do with the We Energies Project. We passed a approval for a new service center located at the Northwest Corner of Trenton Road and Wingate Street by We Energies Group. We passed an approval to construct an addition and building alterations located at 777 South Indiana Avenue, which is the Good Shepherd Church, and they are in school, and they are doing a nice project there. We had a request for approval for facade and site updates at 103 South Main Street, which is the Big Brothers and Sisters, to help improve our downtown. We had a request and passed the approval of a preliminary plat for Lakewood Farms, which is the subdivision at Highway NN and 18th. We had a approval request for a one-lot extraterritorial certified survey map. This is on 2230 Rusko Drive, this was separating out the house, the residence, from the rest of the subdivision out there, the parcel, 100-acre parcel that we added on to the city. We also had a request for a three-lot extraterritorial survey map approval on North River Road and Wallace Lake, and a four-lot on North River Road and Wallace Lake also, so there were seven lots added on, in the township of Barton there, and we have to give our, we gave our go-ahead on that. And that was the Plan Commission.
Great, thank you. Administrator, how was your first day?
Very good. Not a report, more of an assurance that, what you already know, we have a very strong department head and department teams. I can assure you, are committed to the concept of continuity of operations and continuing our great service to our community and its citizens as we conduct that search for our next city administration. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief, thank you for your leadership, and it hopefully will be a quick, I don't wanna say it's a quick summer, because I don't want the summer to go by fast, but we don't wanna keep you in this position too long, but we do appreciate the leadership and support very, very much, so. Any Alderman reports tonight? Alderman Sparts?
Next Wednesday, the 16th, I think that is, we are meeting on the Wingate Park subdivision, or the subdivision park, playground improvements. So the Parks Department's holding the meeting at night, Lachlan, I, I don't remember where it was exactly. Pardon? Here? Okay, here. So, I didn't look at that beforehand, so, it's Wednesday already. So, yeah, we'll meet in on Wednesday night for the volunteer meeting, so get excited for that for the summer.
Alderman Allen?
I just wanted to say this is my last council meeting. The next council meeting, my successor, Alderman-elect Brett Engelking will be up here in this position, so just please welcome him, he came to the meeting tonight and signing out over there, so he has to figure out how to navigate the next 46 feet.
Alderman Sternig?
Over the last couple of weeks, just an observation, which has been quite enlightening, spending time in the downtown area, the Riverwalk, driving past, walking past, to see the amount of people as it's warming up, just walking around downtown, spending time along the Riverwalk, I think is testament to the investments that we have made in that area. And I think it's a great thing for our city, if you think back five, 10 years, 1 o'clock on a Sunday afternoon in April, you would not see anybody anywhere near the Riverwalk, and it is, there are a lot of people who are just spending time in that area, which I think is great for our city and great for our community.
Any other reports? If not, I've got just a couple of items, I wanna give you just a brief update on our administrator's search. The job has been posted, it was posted about two and a half weeks ago. I was told that the day that it was posted, we had four applicants right away, which tells me that people out there knew that the position was open. The job will be posted until April 28th, so it will be posted for a total of about five and a half weeks before it closes on the 28th. When people ask, I, I kinda tell them that between now and the 28th, it's gonna be kinda quiet as far as the search goes, as far as what we're responsible for, because our consultants are the ones who are now out there recruiting and collecting applicants, and, and there was a, a big conference down in Milwaukee this week for the ICMA, which is the International Council, or International City Managers Association, and our consultants were there and actively talking to people about the job, so they're doing their work now. If you go to our website, hopefully tomorrow, we'll have our brochure for the position posted on the website, which is kind of the culmination of the meetings that we had with the consultants, and we had two different community leader groups meet with the consultants that kind of puts together the, the brochure and the qualifications and characteristics that we're looking for in the next administrator. I don't know any names, they won't tell us any names of who has applied or anything like that. I might get an update on the number of applicants in the next week or two, if I do, I'll certainly share that with you, but I assume things will really pick up for us the first week of May, where they will have applicants brought to us, they will obviously tell us everybody who's applied, by that time, they will probably tell us, here's the shortlist, if you will, of who they think the shortlist should be. We'll kind of, we'll go through all of the applicants to see if we agree with them on the shortlist or not, and then there'll be interviews and decisions and things made by, by the council at that time. So, any questions as, as far as the search process goes?
How much advance notice are we gonna get, or how much advanced information are we gonna get before we have to start making decisions?
We'll have several meetings. Yep. Several meetings. I, I imagine the shortlist could be 10, that maybe we, are presented to us, that then we narrow down to our top candidates who we wanna interview, and then that process will include the community as well, community tours, individual interviews, not individual with, one-on-one with council members, but obviously individual interviews with the candidates, with the entire council. I will try to give you as much heads up as possible as far as scheduling, and when, when we're gonna be conducting interviews and meeting and, and things like that. The last item I wanna bring up is, our next meeting is actually a week from tomorrow on April 15th at 6:30, and it's our organizational meeting. I anticipate it'll be very, very quick, because it's on a Tuesday night, if there's anybody that can't be here, but you'd like to dial into that, please just let us know ahead of time, so we can get the technology set up. Anticipate that'll be a very quick meeting, 6:30, right here on Tuesday, the 15th.
What kind of items are gonna be discussed?
Yep, great question. So at this organizational meeting, it's where I will present my recommendations on who serves, on what boards, committees, and commissions. And I'll just give you a quick heads up right now, didn't make really any changes. We've got a new Alderman coming in who is representing District Two, which I believe is important that that Alderman sit on the bid board, and also I have on the Tourism Commission. Didn't make any other changes, so basically, I've got Brett coming in and doing the two committee assignments that Mark currently has. If you'd like to see any changes, or like to be removed, or considered being added for something else, please let me know. I was trying to be cognizant of, of scheduling and things, that like, the bid board, for instance, usually meets at 8:00 a.m., 8:15. The Tourism Commission usually meets during the day, like at 11:00 or, or noon, so don't mean to pick on you, Bill, but I know that you work down in Hartford and?
Slinger, but closer.
Slinger, and knew that, like, those two boards might be hard for you to get to, so, but that's just kind of my preview, if you will, there, there will be no surprises, if there's any changes you wanna make, let me know. But that's what I've got, should be a quick meeting.
In the, in the absence of having a communications director, are we also going to be doing photography of the full council and new headshots, including our new Alderman-to-be?
Great question. I don't think we, will we do that, the organizational meeting, or are you gonna do it at our first council meeting?
We are gonna do it at, what I've been told is at the organizational meeting beforehand. You should be getting something from, I believe, Jacob.
Okay.
Just handling that.
Great question, Matt. Mark?
We don't have a, we don't currently have a communications director, at least I haven't heard of one decision being made.
Thank you for bringing that up, Chief.
But we, but we do have the person who stands behind the camera.
Yes.
Yes.
And we have the person who does the web updates, so I'm thinking that that can probably proceed as it has in the past.
Let me finish that topic real quick, Chief, and I'm gonna turn it over to you. Thank you, Matt, for reminding me of that, I, I wasn't aware of that. So on that, on next Tuesday, we're gonna take pictures, we typically try to dress nice, but that is completely up to you, it's, you're an elected official, and you can frankly wear whatever you want. I do kinda like the fact that we in the past have worn jackets, or even ties, or whatever, but again, that's up to you, so plan on maybe coming a, a hair early for a group photo, and then if you get your individual picture taken ahead of time, or after the meeting, whatever, but we'll do that next Tuesday. We do have some news on the communications director position. Chief?
Yep, we did enter into a conditional offer for our candidate, Callie Theo. We hope to have that finalized very shortly, and if everything goes according to plan, she'll be starting actually the day of your next full council meeting on April 21st. But we're still in the offer stage right now, conditional offer, and looking forward, but looks very good that we will have a communications director by April 21st.
Thank you. That's all I have, any other questions? All right. We'll move on, we do have an item that you may deem appropriate for a closed session, and that is a discussion on possible terms for a development agreement in TID number 17 for the proposed Lakewood Farms development located at the corner of 18th Avenue and County Highway NN. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Motion to move into closed session.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zingchime, I'll call the roll. Alderman Schmidt? Alderwoman Seizer? Alderman Sparts? Alderman Zingchime?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
And before we leave, we will go upstairs, Ian? I think we'll go upstairs, because there's a little more room up there. We've got a couple of young ladies here from the Slinger School District tonight, correct? And they're here because of a class that they're taking, where they have to attend a, a government meeting, and so a lot of times, these students will choose to go to school board meetings, but these are a lot more fun, so we appreciate you, young ladies being here tonight, and thanks for joining us, so. We will not reconvene after a closed session, we will adjourn this meeting from our closed session.